Fifty-five. This is our time set aside for our season of prayer. And Commissioner. I'll hold the meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have Commissioner Schreiber lead us off from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heavens and on earth.
All right. Our first agenda item is our consent agenda. But before I move into that, there's one of them I want to remove or other resonate or resolution is Item B. That is our resolution in support of Operation Green Light to honor Franklin County veterans. So, okay, Young, there's been a motion made and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Full Item B out. Uh, I'm going to read off this. It's a Franklin County Board of Commissioners' Resolution Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans 2024. Whereas residents of Franklin County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Franklin County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by function as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas the Franklin County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore being resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Franklin County hereby declares October through Veterans Day, November 11th, November 11th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it other resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, Franklin County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made the immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2024, through this fourth day of November, 2024. Make a motion to adopt the resolution. All right. Has been a motion made? I don't hear a second.
Second.
Okay, has been a motion made? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I would like to recognize our service veteran service officer tonight, Ms. Brenda Wilkins. If you'd come up, I'd like to give her this signed resolution.
Right here.
Uh, is there any other people here in the audience that are active military or out of veterans? If so, please stand up, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Schreiber, because I know he's a veteran, U.S. Marine Corps.
Yes, sir.
So, if you please stand too.
Recognition.
On your feet. Let's go. We know who you are. So, you know other veterans here? Uh, I can say I'm too a veteran, too.
You as well.
I'm a Franklin County Legion, post-52 of Franklin, one of the gutsiest gangs of people I know of. Tough bunch right there. But I was in from '72 to '76. Navy. Mentioned that one day, Navy, then on Marine Corps. Mr. Schreiber.
Mr. Chairman, you were heard.
I hear you. All right. Uh, all right. Going back to the-
Thank you for your service as well.
All right, here. Okay. Going back to the consent agenda. Item A, October 21st, 2024 minutes. Item C, fiscal year, 25 budget amendment number eight. Number, Item D is the Airport Access Road Project Flight Project Budget Ordinance Amendment number two. E, amend the fee, the fee schedule for the system development fees. And Item F is a Franklinton, the Nova Neesis Rails to Trails Contract Amendment.
Motion approved.
Second. Been a motion made in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on along to our next item. Item number two is comments from the public. This is a time set aside by the Board of Commissioners to allow individuals five minutes to address the board on issues concerning the county. I have my first speaker here is Rosemary Champion. If you'd come on down to the podium.
Rosemary Champion, 1168 White Level Road, Lewisburg, North Carolina. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I know that next week you will be meeting with other county commissioners to set a legislative agenda for you, and I also know that there are a lot of issues that we could use here in Franklin County because Raleigh seems to be passing the buck to the counties for our funding. But the one thing I wish that maybe we can get together on is Leandro. Those funds are just sitting there. They, the court has ordered them to be released, but they will not release those funds. Um, it's millions of dollars, but just in Franklin County, it is $22.2 million for K through 12 public education. That would give us 42 more teachers' assistants, nine community school coordinators, 61 more nurses, psychological workers, psychologists, counselors, and social workers, 140% increase in textbooks, supplies, and instructional materials, and $1,253 per teacher for professional development. In addition to that, there's another $6.8 million for early education. That would give us 169 more slots for NC pre-K, which is something I wish we could get the, um, them to fund for everybody. It's just an excellent program. But that will give us 60 more, 69 more slots that we could fill. 362% increase in funding to Smart Start. And you had, um, Linda talked to you a few meetings back about what good things Smart Start does. Also, 406 more children in infant and toddler programs. And this is just to North Carolina, Franklin County. And it's Leandro. Don't forget the name. Don't forget us. And just think how that would help you with your budget. And I thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker, Mr. Bill Moss.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Bill Moss, 2813 Market Bridge Lane, Raleigh, North Carolina. Mr. Bun, I haven't said hi to you yet. Mr. London, I haven't said hi to you yet. Everybody else I've said hi to. Uh, I wanted to give two items of what I think are very good news related to the Youngsville bypass, at least the Rolling Meadows segment. As you all know, Rolling Meadows is essentially five different subdivisions, but one of the crucial elements of the Rolling Meadows subdivision project is that the developer will have to install the first segment of the Youngsville bypass. And the hope and belief is by kicking off that first segment, it's going to create momentum and create the basis on which the rest of the bypass can be constructed as early as possible. Uh, as a reminder, Jim Moss and I are sort of the spokespeople of the families that own that property. There are actually 11 individual owners in nine different families of the Moss, extended Moss family that own the Rolling Meadows family. So, when you see the two of us, it's not the two of us talking about our properties, two of us talking about our family's property. We do not have a contract with a developer. What we have is a contract with BRD Land, and their company does the permitting, and then they contract with the developers. And the, 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 uh, plan is that they do all the, you know, the surveying, the typographical studies, the due diligence, they do the permitting, and the permitting has to go to the town of Youngsville, Franklin County, state of North Carolina, and the federal government. And at the end of their process, they go to these large national developers who have the financial means, the wherewithal, and the expertise to put this project in place and build the first segment of the bypass. And so, one of the things that we, the Moss family, liked about dealing with BRD is we're not tied to one individual developer. They're doing all the work, and you cannot believe how much money has been spent on this permitting. I mean, it is an incredibly complex and expensive process to do all the surveying, due diligence, permitting, and all of engineering and submit it. But they're taking that so that then they can talk with multiple developers and make and deal with the best developer for this situation. That's item number one. That's good news. Item number two, at about 6:30 in the morning last Friday, a resident of Youngsville, North Carolina was out for his jog and was almost run down on Main Street. The bypass has been discussed a lot about safety, safety, safety. So, the good news is this resident was not injured, but it was a close call. The resident happened to be, my brother, Jim. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our public comment section. Moving on to Item Three with action items. Section A, the Vaya update. Ryan Preable, Assistant County Manager, will introduce Elliot Clark, Regional Director of the Community Relations for Vaya Health.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd like to introduce L.A. Clark with Vaya Health, who will provide an update for us and answer any questions you guys might have. Good evening. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you tonight, and thank you for, uh, your grace in my rescheduling from the previous appointment. Uh, I'd like to thank Kristen for working with me on that one, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us on the agenda tonight. Uh, so I am Elliot Clark, Regional Director with Vaya Health. We are now what's called a tailored plan in the state of North Carolina. We are the same relatively small, very special, specialty healthcare plan that focuses on serving folks that depend on the public system for care that live with mental illness, substance use, and intellectual developmental disabilities. Uh, before you tonight, you have a presentation that will outline some of the things that we are operating as a tailored plan, which is a little bit different than where we were before. Uh, so you've got some summary information in front of you there, uh, some, some description as to what that means, and then you've got some, uh, local data as far as what service provision looks like in the county. Uh, and afterwards, obviously, would love to entertain some questions. All right. So, on July 1st of this year, uh, we became, and so did three other health plans in the state, a tailored plan. And the high level, uh, what that basically means is we don't just carry, uh, individuals, um, in behavioral healthcare. We don't just cover individuals behavioral, behavioral healthcare. We cover physical, pharmacy, uh, and traumatic brain injury services as well. So, we focus still on the same population that we always have, but we're able now to incentivize better outcomes for our members and our providers through covering whole person care. And along with that doesn't just come reimbursing, you know, physical healthcare. It comes with, uh, certain perks that address social determinants of health, uh, like transportation, education, uh, better access, uh, to services. So, a lot of the things that we're able to do now, uh, as of July, are really helping us. The state's new model, uh, for Medicaid in the state has, has really, um, created some better opportunities for individuals that, that live with these types of, uh, issues that, that we all know of. All right. So, um, basically what a, a tailored plan does, as I, as I mentioned, is puts the person first, and it serves the whole person. So, it hopefully will, uh, simplify the access for not just the member, but for the providers as far as how that individual accesses the care and how the providers are able to bill down for their care. So, we as a, a health plan can monitor and, uh, become better aware of not just what individuals are struggling with, uh, on a behavioral health level, but we can pay attention to, uh, the issues that they may be facing as far as diabetes or, uh, weight loss, a very, a variety of different physical health conditions that also contribute to behavioral health and vice versa. So, all those types of needs are met in, in this one plan. Next slide, on Slide Two. Basically, what this, uh, outlines is, is that, uh, individuals that were enrolled previously in the Medicaid, uh, direct plan, um, have transitioned over. Uh, so on July 1st, a lot of individuals got an updated card in the mail saying, you know, uh, a lot of times when, when the state makes these types of changes, uh, people are auto-enrolled. Some people self-selected, but a lot of people were auto-enrolled, uh, and received, uh, a notification that their health plan was Vaya and an indicated primary care provider on that card. Uh, if they haven't, if, if all of these, all of our providers are in network, and if for some reason an individual's identified PCP is not in network, as of January 1st, that individual would need to select a new primary care provider. Luckily, uh, we hit 95% of our capacity for behavioral, uh, for our physical health network on day one, when we went live. Uh, so, very, very few, it's been very few and far between when we've heard back that an individual, uh, had to make a change as far as their primary care practitioner because of this change in their health plan. All right. So, who's managing these tailored plans in the state? Uh, so four, uh, health plans are in operation. Vaya Health covers 32 counties, uh, in the state of North Carolina. By membership, uh, we are the smallest of those four health plans. Uh, we cover about 42, 43,000 individuals in the state of North Carolina. Um, our niche is rural North Carolina. Uh, we, uh, have incentivized and come up with payment reimbursement structures with our providers that help incentivize folks, uh, being able to work in rural areas where, as before, a lot of what you would see, especially on the commercial ends, are, uh, investments being made where, uh, large, uh, populations and, and membership density is, is there. Uh, but we pride ourselves in, in focusing on rural, uh, areas in North Carolina. Uh, my particular area of focus is, as you guys might remember, is Vance, Granville, Franklin, and Person County. All right. So, what is new? Uh, the, the issue around making sure that a provider is in network is something that originally, when we, but right before we went live, we spent a lot of time trying to educate, uh, members and the community around just what this means, what to expect, um, so that folks understood that, uh, their provider needed to be in network. Um, we have staffed up a lot around our member engagement, uh, teams to make sure that if members have questions or if there's changes, folks can access somebody and ask the questions that they need to ask to, uh, need to ask easily. And I mentioned, uh, and it's actually January 31st, my apologies, not January 1st. Um, but if that, uh, that primary care practitioner is not in the, in the network, uh, that change would need to take place by January 31st of, of next year. Uh, most of what we're doing as far as services that people are used to getting is staying the same. Our goal in this change was for the members to not experience any type of interruption in service, not any type of change in service. Um, and, and that is the case. So, what the state made sure that they were clear on, uh, when we went into a tailored plan is that everything we were able to cover before, we're able to cover today. Um, a, a unique thing about a tailored plan, when you think about Medicaid, uh, and the folks that depend on the public system, is that tailored plans also manage state funding for those that are uninsured or underinsured for behavioral healthcare. So, we maintain that allocation from the state. Uh, it's commonly called the single stream of funding. You may have heard of the state's, uh, investment, uh, this past fiscal year of, uh, $865 million across the state of North Carolina to improve behavioral healthcare. A lot of that was around Medicaid expansion and, and making sure that, uh, some of these social determinants could be, uh, addressed. Uh, but a big piece of that was for making sure that folks that fell through the crack, that weren't covered under Medicaid, had access. So, we cover that population as well. Our providers, we have a provider in every county that can receive those state funds and serve individuals that are uninsured. Uh, it mentions on here, and I'll, I'll make note, um, the, another thing that has not changed is the, the waitlist that some of our members are on for the Innovations waiver. Uh, as a reminder, the Innovations, uh, waiver is specifically geared towards individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities that would otherwise, uh, most likely be, um, housed in an institution, uh, that we want in community, in their own homes, living with supports, uh, and, and living that, uh, integrated. and living that integrated. So you'll see in this presentation, there's a lot of jargon and probably some acronyms sprinkled in there that I will explain on some of them. But the main thing I wanted you guys to understand that is, is a lot of the same things that we have been covering, we continue to cover. Services like intensive in-home, we cover services that aren't just clinic-based, where you have to go into an office, but these services come to you, they come to your home. We have some providers that specifically are geared that way, that's all they do, even if they do outpatient therapy. Their teams are equipped and used to coming in and offering those services into, in somebody's home so that access is eased. So within the tailored care plan, one of the changes is around pharmacy and our tailored care management. So some of the things that we have staffed up is around making sure that our staff that previously was primarily behavioral health specialists, licensed clinical social workers, or licensed professional counselors, that we now have a staff of medical professionals that are skilled in the physical health network. So we've hired a lot of RNs and medical doctors that can help oversee and make sure that the outcomes are good as far as the physical health is concerned. All right, so a couple of the things that I'll mention, and it lists comprehensively in your, in your slide, starting on
Slide eight.
Via Total Care perks, as we call it, and that's what I mentioned early on. A lot of what we're able to do now is pay for help in a way that is non-clinical, meaning addressing some of the social drivers of health that folks wind up struggling with and winds up preventing people from making good outcomes in their behavioral health. Couple of the programs that we offer are assistance with gaining a GED. We've worked with some of our community colleges, and we have funding specifically set aside for our members, that if that's a goal of theirs, we can offer a financial reimbursement and a scholarship to help them gain a GED. Also, just get access to tutoring and that type of thing that helps on that level. Also, an area that we're getting into is non-medical transportation. An area that we've been covering is non-medical transportation to doctor's appointments, that's still covered under Medicaid, just like it always has been. But a new perk that we have under a tailored plan is that we are able to now provide assistance to individuals gaining transportation to their jobs, to social functions in the community, whereas before, if you were to get Medicaid transportation, it was specifically for a medical reason. On slide 10, you'll see a little bit of an outline, a little bit more detail as far as our tailored care managers, the types of work that they do. A lot of what they're doing now is anywhere from helping families locate childcare, locate affordable housing, which is a big issue in our entire region, certainly in Franklin County, Vance County. A lot of what we've been able to do recently, we've just hired an additional housing specialist that helps people connect with grant funding and Medicaid reimbursable funding that will assist with affordable housing and supportive housing. So not just helping people find a place where they can afford to live, helping people get access to services that will surround them with budget management, anywhere from just getting used to managing, having your own home, to managing some, some behavioral health and some of the stressors that come along with living independently. Got an entire team that's specifically focused on transitions to community living and affordable All right, getting in a little bit to our data specifically for Franklin County, a few of the slides that I'll show are going to be reflective of the entire fiscal year of 2024. Reason we're presenting it now is you have to give 90 days, all of this is based on claims data. So within the Medicaid system, you give 90 days for claims to clear. So the data that you'll see before you for fiscal year 24 is, is complete and accurate for the county. First slide you'll see is a graph that breaks down members that are on our innovations waiver that I mentioned, that are living in the community with intellectual developmental disabilities that were at risk of institutionalization. In Franklin County, there's 85 individuals that are on that waiver that receive that level of care, and there are currently 68 on the registry of unmet needs or the waitlist. Just to give you guys an idea of statewide what that number looks like, there's well over 12,000 individuals across the state that are still on the waitlist for a waiver slot. And the way that works is we receive those waiver slots directly from the legislature. In the last fiscal year, we got 250 new waiver slots, which was great, but we need more. There's families, I met a family about two weeks ago that just got a waiver slot for their son who's 15, and they got on that waitlist when he was six years old. And, and that's not uncommon. You get some families that wait well over 10 years to get an innovations waitlist, innovation slot in the state of North Carolina. Breaking down some of the numbers for the county, you know, the vast majority of what we wind up serving are adults with mental illness. That's the highest volume of, of care that we wind up providing. In this, in Franklin County, throughout the last fiscal year, we served 625 individuals with severe and persistent mental illness or serious mental illness. You'll see on here that particularly, I'll kind of highlight one of the outliers, and that is for substance abuse, that's SA on the, on the far right. You'll see a little blip and barely even a line that you can see the color of three individuals served, and that's to indicate the number of individuals that had a primary substance abuse diagnosis that were youth. That is certainly not reflective of the amount of youth that are experiencing substance use and substance abuse these days. That is simply the primary treating diagnosis. So many times, a lot of the individuals that we treat with mental illness also have a co-occurring substance abuse diagnosis. So when you think about the services that are actually provided, and you see that number three, a lot of where that's captured is actually in the, in the mental health side for, for youth. So I wanted to make sure. Some of our providers that we have are outlined in this slide. A local walk-in clinic that also receives some of that state funding and can serve folks with Medicaid or uninsured is Vision Behavioral Health Services, they're right downtown. Couple of our other large providers, obviously Mariah Param, Franklin, we contract with them for services both in their inpatient unit there and in their emergency department. Daymark Recovery Services in Henderson, there's a lot of community-based services, intensive in-home, some of the services for youth. Youth Villages is a large youth provider in the county as well. And At Home Counseling, which I know you guys are familiar with, great provider of ours that are right downtown Lewisburg and have been doing wonderful things. So anyway, just wanted to highlight some of those providers for you guys. Central Community Services is also one of those providers that's been around a long time, specializes in treating individuals with mental illness, and also has the psychosocial rehab, the day program for, for adults in the community. Very briefly, I know you've heard in the past Mariah Param present data, much more comprehensive data around volume in their emergency department. The numbers that you'll see here are just a small little fragment of that, and that's just the Vaya members that wind up coming through the emergency room. You'll see there's been an uptick in quarter four up through June in access of the emergency department. And I'll say this, over the last year, we've been without a regional crisis center that was formerly in Henderson. That was a 12-bed facility-based crisis, 24-hour facility, where an individual, if they were experiencing a crisis or needed detox, they could come in for about three to five days and access that care. There are other facility-based crisis centers that folks have been able to access, but we don't have one locally right now. We have been searching for a space now for almost two years. It really hurts for me to say that, too. It has almost been two years that we have been searching for a facility that will be large enough and accommodate the types of, the type of center that we need to build out to be sustainable. We do have plans and have a site, there's two projects that we have that are going on currently. There's the 16-bed facility-based crisis for adults and a 16-bed facility-based crisis for youth that we currently are developing. For the youth center, we're currently looking in Henderson, but for the adult center, we're still trying to identify a location that will be suitable. We know we're going to have it in this region, we just don't know where yet. So that's where I will, in my presentation, and love for questions if you have them.
Any commissioners have a question?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
You mentioned about transportation for various things, which is really good. How do you, what's the, what facilitates the transportation? Is it local?
Carts, carts is a primary provider for us. So the, the entity that we contract with to manage the non-emergent medical transportation is called Motive Care. And carts is a, is a vendor with Motive Care. They're familiar with them. Essentially, that's a third party that we make sure that we can oversee and we negotiate the rates and we can negotiate a lot of things, but that is a specialty vendor that we use and the whole state, except for one health plan, on the commercial side and on our side uses Motive Care as a single vendor for, for non-emergent medical transportation.
So but there, there are other venues that, so Motive Care makes that decision, whether it's a private, third-party-owned transportation system or carts.
That's correct, that's correct. And it could be a county, we've got a few counties that still run non-ambulatory out of their EMS departments, they contract with, with Motive Care directly for that as well. So, but that's how that works.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner?
Yes, I do have a question. Good evening, Elliot.
Good evening.
You touched on affordable housing, and I'm looking at the bullet point of, under Vaya Total Care Support from tailored care managers, find housing options and financial help. Could you kind of expand on the ways that they go about doing that?
Sure, absolutely. So Medicaid doesn't like to pay for housing, especially for adults. There's very few instances outside of the innovations waiver where Medicaid will actually come in and pay for someone's residential support. A lot of where that lands is on the state. So even if somebody has Medicaid, if they require a level of care, a residential level of care, be it a group home or an individual that's living independently, that just needs services within their home, a lot of times that's dependent on the state to allow for that care. So a tailored care manager is going to come in and they're going to look at the whole picture, they're not just going to lean on, oh, this is what Medicaid will cover for you. They're going to make sure that they tap in to other state-funded services that will help. There's a department within Vaya that's called Transitions to Community Living, and what they do is they have individuals called in-reach specialists, and they'll come out, and this is actually all out of the old DOJ settlement that, gosh, I think it was 2011 or 2010, when it was completed, when the state had to, actually, you know, so the state of North Carolina got sued by the Department of Justice, saying, there's too many people with mental illness and substance abuse living in congregate living settings, in assisted living facilities and facilities that were over and above what they deemed appropriate. And so North Carolina got in some hot water and they said, here's what, here's some marks that you need to meet and find people more adequate, more individualized housing. So a little bit of money came along with that, too, that helped the state fund some of that. But what that did is that created that transitions of community living departments across all health plans in North Carolina. So you, every health plan has a team of specialists that will come out, they'll meet with a family or an individual, assess their situation, not just in their healthcare situation, but their financial situation, and network with local housing authorities, local landlords to come up with an affordable situation. And the state actually has funding that will cover, in some instances, the first two to three months of rent, they'll pay for moving expenses, essentially helping somebody just get on their feet from a financial standpoint. And then we come along with services, make sure that folks are coming into their home, monitoring the situation, making sure it's a good match, making sure that it's a, you know, that they can be successful where they are. And, and that creates just a relationship. So they have that tailored care manager and that transitions to community living care manager associated with them throughout their membership with us. As long as they're accessing services by us, they have that person that they've developed a relationship with that can help them navigate that situation. We are, of course, at the mercy of, of a lot of times landlords, accepting these programs and working with these programs. That becomes an issue, not gonna, not gonna lie. We've luckily been able to establish some pretty good relationships with, with landlords and have some folks that have worked with our people fairly well. But there's a lot of individuals that qualify for all these plans, all these services, and when it comes down to an actual place, being willing to accept that voucher, if you will, it becomes an issue. But I know that was a lot, but that, that's what I, what I want you to understand, I guess, is primarily there's funding attached to it, but there's also an entire department of professionals that help those individuals navigate it and have that relationship with them.
And, and the same steps, I'm assuming, can be said about locating childcare and after school care?
Yes, so the, the funding for supplemental, you know, support for, for childcare is a little bit different. That still rests, of course, with DSS, you know, DSS has a, actually, they have a specific set of funding for families with children that have a, an identified developmental disability where they can get a supplement. But yeah, the same, same kind of program, but those care managers network with, with DSS to, to access that support.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, moving on to item four is appointments. NCACC Legislative Goals Conference. The NCACC Legislative Goals Conference will be held November 14th through the 15th, 2024, in Wake County. Delegates will vote on a slate of goal proposals that have been thoroughly vetted with the final slate of proposals to be brought before the association's membership. Each county is asked to select a voting delegate and alternate for the conference. All right, board members? Anybody here rested being a voting delegate or alternate? Say I do, or I will.
Mr. Chairman, what about the delegation that we sent to the conference in November? Those, those commissioners that served in that role, could they serve in this role too?
I don't see why not. Sounds good to me.
I don't know if they're interested in doing that or not.
Danny, I want you though.
Danny was a voting delegate, was it you that were?
I was not, I think.
I, I can't on the 14th and 15th, unfortunately, because of my job, I have, I won't on the
Are there any other volunteers?
Danny, would you be interested?
I don't think it would be proper for me to do it because I'm going out. I just don't think it would be fair. Otherwise, I would.
Any other commissioners?
I can go. Y'all tell me what you want.
You can keep him straight. Look out for our best interest.
Move to the point, Roxanne.
There you go, I'll second that. All right, motion voted second, any discussion?
Thank you, Roxanne.
All is favor. All opposed?
No.
Okay, you rescind that.
I rescinded.
That's a unanimous vote.
Now you need an alternate.
Roxanne Brad. Okay.
All right. Now you need an alternate.
You don't have to have an alternate, but it's good practice.
You don't have to, as long as we know for sure.
Okay. Okay.
I'll get one if I'm sick or something.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item five is other business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion I need to make. I move that the Board of Commissioners terminate the employment of the county manager effective today, November the fourth, 2024. And I further move that Ryan Preble be appointed as interim county manager effective immediately.
Right, there's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Second. Okay, there's been a motion made and a second. Right? All in favor? All opposed? No. Third, we roll call.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Speed?
No.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Mr. Boy?
No.
Mr. Brad?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. London?
No.
And Mr. Bunn? Four-three, the motion passed.
All right. So next step? I guess so, but it sounds pretty official to me, unfortunately. Anyway, Mr. Preble? Okay. All right. Is there any other business? Come before the board. All right, moving on to item six. Board, manager, and clerks' comments. This is a time set aside for the Board of County Commissioners, county manager, and clerk to the board to report on various activity. The board may also discuss other items of interest. All right, with all. Doesn't comment. County attorney?
No comment.
No comment? All right. Commissioner Bunn?
I have no comments.
Commissioner London?
Comment at all.
Commissioner Brad?
Yes. Franklin Fest was held last Saturday. It was in Franklinton. There were so many children running around getting candy and costumes, adults in costumes, and there was some really good costumes. That was a lot of fun. It was a good event in Franklin. We've had eight visits at the schools as of last week, and I have been on all eight visits, but we got to go to the early college. And let me tell y'all, if y'all don't know what that is, or you haven't ever been, you need to go and be educated, not just even, just don't even worry about touring the building. Just go be educated on what early college is, because I was really, did not know what it was, but what a great program in Franklin County. And I hope that anybody that has middle school, middle school children, I guess it goes through the eighth grade middle school, and they want to get into early college, they have to start in their first year of high school and go through, they can either, they, they don't have to stay in it, they can drop out. They're not a good fit. So if they sign up for it, they can go and, and, but if they sign up for it and they go and they excel, these, these smart kids that excel, go through that program so that they can get their college associate's degree along with their high school diploma. It's a, it's really a good program in Franklin County for our students, and I, I am totally impressed. So they should, you know, if, I hope anybody hears this, if you've got middle school students and you're thinking about, you know, and they're excelling in school, they should think about early college and go into that program. The other thing is, y'all see, I'm wearing my Franklinton High School T-shirt, which I got at the Franklinton High School when I did that last week. And the reason I'm wearing the T-shirt is I graduated from Franklinton High School, the old school many moons ago, and they had the T-shirts out there, and they gave me one, and I told them that if they give me a T-shirt, I'd wear it to the commissioners' meeting. They couldn't believe I would. I said, yes, I will, too. So I proudly am wearing my Franklinton High School T-shirt. And let me tell you, that school, I think it's the newest school that was built in Franklin County. What a wonder. Y'all would not believe that school, and the floor plan is so awesome. It's a large school with some room to grow. I'm so impressed with the, the layout and the way that school is built, the New Franklinton High School building that's over on Cedar Creek Road. So that's, I'm excited about my school visits. I've been to eight, so let's go to, what, ten more? And I've also requested that we also tour some of the charter schools, because if we're visiting our schools and our public schools in the county, we do fund the charter schools, and we should visit some of those, too, and see how they fare. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pierce?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Speed?
No comment.
Commissioner Schreiber?
No comments.
Our new interim county manager, Mr. Preble?
I don't have any comment.
Don't have any comment or nothing yet? Okay. Appreciate it. Okay. The only thing I have to report on, I concur with Commissioner Brad, the, the school visits coming up. It'll be Thursday of this week. Two more, anxiously waiting there. Two then. There'll make six more to go. Anybody? Invite all the other commissioners, if they can work within their schedules or whatever to do that. It's a very interesting time on tours on these schools. Lot of square footage. Again, I said that last time. All that square footage, it's spotless as can be. That concludes my report. Moving on to item seven, closed session. The board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to the following North Carolina general statutes. NCGS 143-318 dot 11A3, Attorney-client Privilege Communication. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move, go into closed session.
Second. And a motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. Hopefully, we'll be back out in just a few minutes. Do I hear a motion out of closed session? So, second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, is there anything else to come before the board?
Move to adjourn.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.